All right. You guys all ready to start?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is the June 13th Town Official Planning Board meeting. And we are calling the meeting to order at 7:00 o'clock precisely. Would you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. As always, we'll ask everybody in the room to silence cell phones. And when speaking, speak directly into the microphone so that everyone can hear. We will have all seven voting members tonight, except one of them. Fred Cantor indicated that he'd be a little bit late. So I think what I'll do, because it wasn't clear when, he said he would get here, I'd like to appoint alternate member Kevin O'Connell temporarily to fill in for Fred until Fred gets here. So if that's all right, we'll do that. Okay. I think that's it for announcements. So we have one new submittal tonight. This is 698 Route 52 and 712 Route 52 for a lot line realignment. So it's a rather lengthy description for a fairly simple project, but I'll read it anyway. Applicant seeks lot line realignment approval to revise the lot line between tax map parcel 6055-16979469, consisting of 4.10 acres located at 698 Route 52, and tax map parcel 6155-03008477, consisting of 4.74 acres located at 712 Route 52. Both parcels are located in the GB General Business zoning district and the R21 Family Residential zoning district. This lot line realignment will result in tax map parcel, and I'll just give you the last numbers, 979469, to consist of 4.60 acres, and parcel 008477 to consist of 4.24 acres. The lot line realignment is submitted pursuant to Town Official Town Code Chapters 132-46 and 132-47, and has been referred already to the Town Engineer, Town Planning Board Attorney, and Town Building Inspector Zoning Administrator. The Board will allow informal comments from the public after discussion of this application. So I'll just mention the applicant has submitted the required application fees and escrow deposit. So, welcome, Mr. Poval.
Good evening.
Would you like to give us a brief explanation of this proposal?
Sure. My name is Bill Poval, I'm engineer for the applicant QB Fishkill LLC.
Sorry, Bill, could you move a little closer to the mic?
I got it.
What's going on, Pete? Thank you. Thank you.
How's that?
Much better.
All right. Again, Bill Poval, engineer for the applicant QB Fishkill LLC. I'm here tonight proposing a simple lot line realignment between two parcels that are off 52. The one parcel has Fishkill Auto Body, which I'm sure everybody's familiar with. And that's the 4.1 acre parcel. And then the second parcel is to the east, and that also includes a private road to some residences in the back. And what we're looking to do is take a half acre off the eastern parcel and add that to the Fishkill Auto Body parcel. And that's a half an acre. And the area that we're proposing to transfer to the Auto Body parcel is in the front thing on Route 9, I mean, Route 52, which is shaded in the dark gray there. And that area right now is actually used by the Auto Body. It has part of the parking lot and access drive. So what we're looking to do is just clean up the property lines by making this transfer.
Sounds very simple. John, welcome. Would you like to just briefly review CPL's memo on this?
As far as Seeker goes, we believe the lot line revision can be classified as a type 2 action. We asked them to correct a typo in the title block. There are some existing non-conforming setback area requirements. We just want you to note that in the bulk table. And-
That's something I'd like to go over with you, because I'm not sure where that is.
I believe, I don't have the plan in front of me, but yeah, we can, we can, I can get more specific with that.
Okay.
So, any utilities, sewage treatment systems, gas mains, service lines, those kind of things, especially in the area that's going to be transferred. If they're not currently shown, they should be shown. And then we'll need the proposed deeds with meets and balances descriptions to close it out. And that's all I had.
And the only thing I'd like to note is there are no utilities in that particular area that would be going across any of these projects.
Okay. Yeah, it wasn't clear. There was, I think, a gas valve shown pretty close to that area out in the road, so.
Okay.
All right.
Yep.
Any questions from Planning Board members?
Yeah, I did have a comment. The shaded area on the plan, it says the, what's to be conveyed from one lot to the other. I think you have it backwards.
Yes, I was going to mention that. Thanks for catching that, too. Yeah, the numbers are definitely-
Just flip the numbers.
Definitely, the numbers are switched.
Other than that, no comment.
And where is that?
Oh, right in the middle of the shaded area where you say the shaded area represents area to be conveyed-
Okay.
-from tax grid, one number to the other. Just switch the numbers.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Dominic, do you have any comments on the legal aspects of this proposal?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, just a couple of quick things. This is a lot line realignment. And as such, my understanding is, even though it's located on Route 52, it does not need to be referred to the Dutchess County Department of Planning. And also, because it's a lot line realignment, the Board has the ability to waive the public hearing if you so choose.
All right. And I'd just like to ask to confirm, Bill, that no further development of either parcel would result or be furthered by this lot line realignment?
No, there's no future plans for any development. If you look at the area that we're looking to transfer, you can see that the parking lot and the access around the building was on the other lot. So this is more of like a cleanup.
Yep. Okay. So CPL's memo noted that this appears to be a type 2 action, which is similar to what we've done with other lot line realignments. So Dominic, if you concur on that?
I do.
Okay. I'll ask for a motion to classify this proposed revised lot line approval as a type 2 action pursuant to Seeker. Would someone like to move that?
So we'll-
Anthony moves it. Felix seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries 7 to 0. And also, I guess we'll need a motion to waive the public hearing for this revised lot line proposal. Would someone like to move that?
I'll move it.
Moved by Felix?
Yep.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was Kevin?
Yes.
Kevin seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So that carries. So at this point, I'll just ask briefly if there's anyone in the audience who would like to make informal comments on this proposal. Doesn't look like it, but I thought I would ask anyway. All right. So this is an expedited review under Town Code provisions. Would it be appropriate, Dominic, if we ask you to, at this point, prepare a draft resolution for the July meeting?
I'd be happy to.
Is the Board okay with that?
Yes.
All right. So this would be a motion to prepare a draft resolution by our attorney of conditional final approval for the proposed 698 and 712 Route 52 revised lot line with the required conditions for the Board's review and consideration at the July 11th Planning Board meeting, subject to the applicant submitting a revised and corrected plat by the submission deadline of June 26. That would be if we're going to do this at the July meeting. Would someone move that?
Some moved.
Moved by Felix. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Anthony seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that carries. And so, John, does it sound like we need a motion to authorize you to speak with the applicant's engineer?
Yeah, that would be good, because I just, I want to recheck that zoning table, because I thought I saw one, at least one setback in there that was pre-existing non-conform. But I'd like to double check.
All right. And if there were any other of those elements that you listed in your memo that you think should be pursued on the plan itself, then you could discuss that as well.
Sure.
Okay. Would someone like to move that?
Some moved.
Anthony moves it. Felix seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that is done. Okay?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Good to see you again, Billy.
Thank you.
This is our first project review for the night. Homeland Towers Communications Tower, 73 Route 9 Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit. Board to review the submission made by the applicant's representative on May 29, 2024. Welcome.
Good evening. Again, for the record, my name is David Kenny. I'm the attorney with Snyder &amp; Snyder, here tonight to represent the applicant's Homeland Towers and Verizon Wireless.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Many sleepless nights, but wouldn't trade it for the world. Since our last, or in our last filing, we did provide responses to some of the planners' comments and other comments we received from the Planning Board. One of what we presented was, we're offering a couple of different options for coloring the tower. If you can go into the painted, I'll click on it. So what we found for these types of designs is coloring the tower is sometimes the best way to reduce its noticeability. Again, we can't make them invisible, so there is a limitation with the line of sight technology. There has to be some visibility to the roadway or to the areas that are in need and service. But we have done combinations in areas where we paint part of the tower, either a brown color that blends in with the vegetation, and then atop of the tower that is maybe above the tree line, a light blue color or a sky color. And that seems to reduce the noticeability of it. But we're really open to any color options. These are some examples of towers that actually do have these color options. So these were not photo simulations, but real-world examples. Again, this one would be of just a pure brown tower. Sometimes, especially with this, with most of the views having the ridge in the background or the mountain in the background, it can blend in. It'll be, again, the idea is to have it less noticeable. This is one that has a two-tone. Again, the light brown is at the base of it, and then about where the trees top out, there is like a lighter gray or a lighter blue color. Again, the idea being when the bottom part of the tower is within the vegetation, it helps blend in with that vegetation. And then the top part that is going to be above the vegetation, kind of the background of the sky to blend in with. We did receive the planner memo that was just given to us in response to the most recent submissions. We did have a few items that we wanted to go over with the Board. I'm not sure if you wanted to hear from Liz first, or if you would prefer us to speak.
Yeah, I think we'd rather hear from Liz first, and then we can have a discussion about it.
Okay.
All right. I'll, just before we do that, mention that Fred Cantor did arrive at about 7:15 or 7:14. So Kevin, if you can return to your role as an alternate member, and Fred will pick up where we left off. Welcome, Fred. Okay, go ahead. Liz and John, if you could tag team on CPL's review memo.
I'm going to defer to Liz. We didn't really have anything new on the resubmission.
Okay. All right.
Good evening. My name is Liz Axelson, AICP from CPL, and planning consultant to the Planning Board. Lucky me. So I did try to do a thorough review, because the idea here, I think, is to try to keep the questions flowing. The sooner they can be answered, the sooner all of this moves forward. So I'm going to skip right over to page 2 and just touch on a few things. The site plan is a little bit more complete. The full environmental assessment form is a little bit more complete. And the visual resource assessment, which is, the code calls for visual impact analysis. Visual resource assessment is basically what is provided, and that's fine. But it is incomplete, so I went into detail. I don't know if you want me to touch on the detailed items in my comments regarding the visual impacts, or?
Well, some of the highlights of it, I think, would be good.
Okay. Okay, that's fine, then. One of the, you know, one of the things that I kind of forced myself to go back, listen to the video, come back and go back up and down Route 9, basically via Google Earth, because I did have the site visit, I did have photos, I remembered a lot. Then I was reviewing the visual resource assessment, and some parts of it, not all, but some parts of it, were giving an impression that didn't strike me the same way. So I guess the thing I want to emphasize is that, basically, if you're leaving Dutchess Mall site and driving south and go all the way to Phillips Town, or you do the reverse, start from Phillips Town and go north, most of the way, you are going to be in the middle of a tree-lined road, if not forest. Of course, you do see some commercial operations. There's a stretch of about half a mile of the whole two-mile route where there are a number of, you know, either commercial or industrial-style businesses along that stretch of road, basically kind of between, I would say, between Carroll Lane and the neighborhood south of that, and up until you get to just north of the entrance to the last, I think it's the last excavation place. So you do see signs of commercial activity, and you do see some commercial buildings and some fencing, but a lot of the excavation operations have done a significant amount of buffering, whether it be a berm, a grass berm, some vegetation on the berm, or that they have left a swath of land next to Route 9 that is full of trees and low-growing shrubs. So it's a relatively green area, and where you find the biggest visual impact is in about that half-mile stretch between the two neighborhoods south of the site and the Battery Monument, and then a little further north than that, you have decent visibility. So I tried to detail those things in this. And I also, most of the visual resource assessment was very professionally done and very detailed. There were a couple of points that I took issue with. When you're looking at the land area from the air, it does look like considerably more commercial. But when you're riding up and down Route 9, which is what will affect people that use Route 9, that gateway corridor, what you're going to see is different than what you see from an aerial view. So I felt that in some places, the visual resource assessment portrayed that area as visibly mostly industrial, and it really wasn't. And in fact, the factual part of the visual resource assessment indicates that 11% is that. And really, the rest of the study area is mountains and excavation and things you can see, mostly mountains and vegetation, so. So I did have a couple of points about that. I also added that the whole business of the Greenway Guides that are part of your code are the result of Dutchess County doing a study and putting out some documents about the Hudson River Valley Greenway, which Town of Fishkill is a Greenway compact community, so it means you adhere to certain standards, and some of that is actually in your zoning. And so when I was looking at their materials, I stumbled onto a map that basically shows contained green spaces and continuous green spaces and conserve, conserved green spaces. This is at the bottom of page 2. And those are all along the stretch, the two-mile stretch of Route 9 that I was talking about. So there are other entities that recognize that sort of green corridor. Let's see. Also, on page 3, I reiterate kind of what the visual resource assessment was talking about, was that there are a lot of viewers along that roadway. Route 9 has an AADT of 18,340 vehicles per day, and I just made the guesstimation that that likely includes frequent trips by residents or nearby neighborhoods traveling to and from work, school, shopping, et cetera, local businesspeople and other travelers and visitors passing through that part of Fishkill, potentially including tourists. The places that were noted by the visual resource assessment, and I also reiterate them at the bottom of page 3, where the visibility is the highest, is along New York State Route 9 at three points, Carroll Lane, and that's the photo simulation number 16, at the Battery Monument, photo simulation number 17, and at the project site. And they all, all of those views have the backdrop of the mountainous landscape. So again, giving you the big picture of what makes that corridor so important. And then there is some visibility at Carroll Lane from the residential street, that's photo simulation 13. It's not quite as open and stark as the other views. And then there's visibility at Route 9 near the Century Aggregate Quarry entrance. And again, when you're there, this is photo simulation 21, and you're kind of looking, I think, south, southwest, toward the site, and you can see the balloon or ultimately the tower through the trees. But what's in the foreground is what Century Aggregates has left along the roadside. So it is a bit buffered, not as stark as the other ones. Anyway, so I describe, I tried to give you a description from memory at the bottom of page 4 about what you're seeing along that road. And, you know, I would urge the Planning Board, it wouldn't take you long to take a road, a ride down Route 9. Just to refresh, what are you seeing there? And what do you feel about it? And does it matter? And so, let's see.
Yeah, I kind of got the sense from page 4, numbers 7 and 8, your descriptions, which were quite good, I thought. Is that, I think the bottom-line suggestion is to add some of that kind of wording into the BRA-
Mm-hmm, yes.
-just to document more fully what that corridor really is like.
Yep. To kind of even out the conclusions and the observations, to be more accurate. So yeah, I took a poke at it from the perspective of the Town of Fishkill. And so, you know, having a more, you know, I think, a more equal record in the visual resource assessment would be helpful. And of course, that brings me back to the discussion that we had at the last meeting, because we did speak, and the Board did offer their observations about different stealth designs, understanding that the applicant's folks probably would prefer not to have to make those designs. But the Board was really asking, can we get decent illustrations to see what those things look like in reality? And that was the idea. I mean, if I was on your side of things, I might want to know, well, what do you want so we can go ahead and design it and head down the road? But the Board has offered kind of a discussion. Give us some really great illustrations, let's have a discussion, and then we'll give you some direction about what we'd really like to see in an actual simulation. Does that sound right? And the items, and I went back to the video to make sure I wasn't misperceiving, and I'm looking at page 5, comment 10E. The Planning Board discussed designs such as would appear to be a monument, a water tower, a fire tower, a silo, and a smooth brown pole with antennas inside the pole. And there was discussion about, you know, issues with any of those, so there was a possibility of doing an in-between. But in the end of the conversation, the Planning Board said that they really did want to see photographic illustrations of all of those stealth designs that we listed, the smooth brown pole, the monument, water tower, fire tower, silo. And this Planning Board is pretty savvy, and I'm sure that they can look at those illustrations and give you some good guidance about what might be appropriate. Did I touch on what you wanted to hear about, or was there any other point that I should?
Yeah, no, I think that was the discussion, and I think we'll have some further discussion tonight. And I'm sure the applicant team will want to weigh in on that again, or further. So how about any other stuff in the memo that you want to get into now? And then we'll come back to some of these things.
Let's see, hang on, let me just take a quick look. I kind of, on page 6, walked through at the bottom, number 13, because I had been a little stumped by what I had on the record as far as a sign-off, because usually what we receive, ordinarily applicants are filing their applications through New York State Historic Preservation Office's Cultural Resource Information System. And we usually end up with, did I get all the?
Chris.
Okay, Chris. And usually what is provided is the applicant representatives are filing all that material and getting the responses, responding to SHPO, finally getting a sign-off, if that's what's happening. And so I was kind of expecting that, so I had a couple more questions. And then I think finally, perhaps you put in your letter, the one page at the end of the EAF. It's just in a different format, but it basically documents that SHPO has signed off, New York State SHPO has signed off. So I kind of went through the dance of explaining that, and I believe we have a sign-off now. And then, of course, we have a comment letter expressing some very real concerns, and from the gentleman whose email was forwarded.
Yeah, with the email chain from the state, yes.
Right.
Yeah.
And so, his concern about the Battery Monument and that aspect of the character of the corridor, I have tried to address in terms of community character in the corridor along the way. in the corridor along the way. So I share his concern. He had a different way of expressing it, but I thought it was helpful to hear his views.
Getting back to the, um, the SHPO sign-off and the format of that email that we, was at the end of the environmental assessment form, that is something I think we want to talk a little bit more about because it is not something we've seen before in that format.
Yeah.
And I'm also not sure that it really fully addresses a sign-off regarding the sensitivity of the site for archaeological resources. It really focuses on historic resources. So we can discuss that a little bit further, but I'm, I'm thinking that we, the board may want to ask for an actual letter from SHPO, um, regarding that sign-off and to clarify what exactly they're signing, they're concurring with. Anyway, I have a few more comments on that that we'll get into more and I'll, so just wanted to make sure we're hitting everything in your memo. Then we'll have a, a more full discussion, um, bringing the applicant back into it. And then I'll have some of my own observations and we'll open it up to board comments. So is there anything else in the memo that you wanted to cover?
Um, just briefly, um, going to page seven, um, there are very few actual full EAF comments. And what I was trying to do was tie together how, um, I, I had asked for more about visual in the full EAF, um, because there was very little narrative about visual impacts attached to the EAF, but it did make reference to the visual resource assessment. And so I just made an acknowledgement of that because the main point of this is to have for the planning board, a way of examining the potential visual impacts and making sure that the report that you're examining is accurate. So I just tied those things together. Um, and then I do have a, a few more planned comments. I'm not going to get into the nuts and bolts. But one of the things was that there are existing evergreens planted along the site. And there was a map change made in the plan set to show one of those groups, uh, to the north of the driveway of, of the project site. And we just need them to add the grouping of evergreens to the south. And so that would address what I believe is probably the more important, um, questions on the site plans. And then we do need some more detail about, um, having the lot area and bulk table include notation about what was requested from the ZBA. And in general, early in the review, I kept asking about the lease area, but really the setbacks can just be measured from the lot line. It, I view it as a multi-use site that's having another use added and measurements from the property boundary are fine. Based on the code.
One thing I did want to go back to from your memo was the reference to the Town of Phillips Town letter that we received.
Yes.
So that was from Neil Zuckerman, Chair of the Town of Phillips Town Planning Board, dated May 27th, 2024. Um, and Mr. Kenny, I assume you've gotten a copy of that. I don't want to read the whole thing, but it, it's making direct reference to a lot of the things that CPL talked about in the memo regarding potential visual impacts and the, um, visual significance of the Route Nine corridor extending even down into Phillips Town, but also up into the Town of Fishkill, um, along where this project site is. And, um, Mr. Zuckerman comments, for instance, that a tall, highly visible monopole would not be consistent with the rural character of the community. Um, and he notes that, um, stealth design be considered to soften the appearance from areas where it will be visible. And then he goes on and actually suggests that perhaps the Town of Phillips Town and the Town of Fishkill may want to get together at some point to discuss, um, current zoning along the corridor and how that could be addressed in the future. That's kind of a separate issue, but, um, I thought that was interesting. So that's the Town of Phillips Town letter that, um, we've entered into the record.
May I make one comment response to that letter?
Yeah. And why don't we kind of open it up to full discussion now as well? So go ahead and start on that.
Um, we'll have a, a more fuller response in writing with our next submission, but we did want to point out that the Town of Phillips Town itself has three monopole towers along Route Nine. So the statement that they don't want Fishkill to have any towers along Route Nine, they themselves have three towers along Route Nine. I just wanted to put that into context. Yeah, may I begin?
Yeah.
Sure. So we just wanted to go through a few of the comments that, in the planner report. The first one being 6A, um, this is a request that Liz was discussing about the Dutchess Greenway or Dutchess County Greenway Guides. Um, it is noted on the, the Viewshed map that we did designate this area, designated Greenway, uh, uh, trail and state bike route. Um, but if we need to add a different distinction to add Dutchess County, we can absolutely do that. Um, regarding the comment about, um, our VRA discussing that, you know, 85% of the area, um, whereas that the 80, more majority of the area is dominated by the sand and gravel extraction, we were really talking about the areas where the tower would be visible from. Um, we do agree, as you can see from the Viewshed map, I mean, the majority of the study area is absolutely woodland and undeveloped property. Uh, but we're really focusing on where the, the green boxes are, uh, which would be the areas where the tower was visible from. Um, and you know, these areas are next to and adjacent to the industrial uses that are next to and adjacent to the property. Um, so that was kind of the idea of that. Uh, but we do take the note and we can try to, um, more equalize the, the VRA. But we do want to point out that, um, you know, these industrial uses are here, um, and they are visible and so, and they're the, the uses that are directly adjacent to our property. Um, same thing with, uh, 6C. Um, it, it talks about the dense forest vegetation prevents long distant views in most areas. Um, and then it's noted, you know, that was when our VRA, um, then it's noted that, you know, there's parks along Route Nine that open up and the tower would be visible from. Um, it looks like, you know, 6B and 6C are a little bit in conflict with each other because in 6B, it talks about how there's all this deciduous vegetation and there's a lot of trees that prevent views of industrial uses. Uh, but then in 6C, it's, you know, discussing that, you know, there, there are these areas that it opened up. And we did acknowledge that and we took photos from the actual areas where, uh, the tower would be visible from Route Nine. Um, but that's just, you know, a small point. The, regarding 6D and the Battery Monument, um, we did make a comment regarding that the site doesn't include parking. Um, we, that was more in response to, there were some comments, uh, in the previous planner report as well as this one regarding tourism. Um, so the Battery Monument is obviously important. It's something that we took a photo directly in front of and, you know, documented in the VRA. Um, but there isn't an area really to pull off. I just drove by there. The shoulder is about three feet wide and right across the street from the Battery Monument is a brand-new development and that's where the driveway for that new development is. So there really isn't a, a great area to turn off for. I'm sure people can turn off on the side of the road, go there, but it's more to document that the site really isn't supporting, uh, you know, a vast number of tourists, um, at any given time. The next comment regarding 6F, uh, the, again, we put it in the context of the surrounding adjacent Century Aggregate and Thale Industries. Um, and then although there are numerous photographic images that don't show these industrial uses, uh, we did want to point out that the point of the balloon test was to focus the cameras at the balloon. Um, but again, I just drove along this section of Route Nine. While there are trees that block some views, there are still views of the industrial uses. I mean, one of the, right across the street from our property is an industrial use that's visible and doesn't have much, uh, clearing. But, you know, that was just a point regarding, um, putting it into context. Again, uh, with 6G, um, the photo simulations, um, when, with the term very visible, I mean, it's a small point, but if something is visible or not visible, or it's visible, you know, through trees, I think the term very visible is, is a little bit incorrect. Um, and again, it's noted, you know, view 18 has to be put into context because view 18 is, is looking down our driveway. So, um, obviously the tower's going to be visible looking down our driveway. Um, and then in 16 and 17, again, we pointed out in, uh, my cover letter to the board, um, that there are above-ground utility poles that run along, uh, this entire section of Route Nine. So a lot of the views where you're looking across Route Nine to the, the monopole, you're also looking through similar public utility infrastructure. And while 150 monopoles, not the same as a 30-foot utility pole, there are several utility poles and they're much closer in the foreground. So they almost appear to have a similar visual, visual impact. Again, with regarding 6H, um, uh, we made a comment regarding, uh, you know, how the views, we're trying to put them into context. The DEC visual policy actually discusses this. You know, if you're on a bike trail, a view of a bike rider riding down the trail versus a hiker walking down the trail, those are going to be different experiences in the views. Um, same thing if you're on a 55 mile per hour road. So we did want to put that into context because the photos themselves are still. So they're going to be a view when you've stopped and you've looked directly at the tower. However, the most of the views, especially when we're talking about the vehicle views, uh, they're going to be looking things through a peripheral view at 55 miles an hour. And again, we do note that there are driveways, however, I don't believe there's any residential driveways along this section. Um, and that for the non-residential driveways, again, you know, well, they may have a passenger have a view of it, but most of the people turning onto a 55 mile per hour road, we would hope would be looking at oncoming traffic and, and not any scenery or, or a monopole. Regarding 6I, um, again, this is, uh, similar. Uh, we talked about, you know, we're just, the Century Aggregate and Thale Industries are near us. Again, this is trying to put into, uh, you know, context, the direct surrounding uses from us, um, to show that, you know, we're in, again, we're in a zone that allows this type of use and it's allowed other industrial uses. For comment seven, um, it, it discusses how the pathway along New York State Route Nine between Carroll Lane and the Century Aggregate is a length of approximately one-half mile, which is notable to the extent of visibility within Route Nine scenic Gateway Corridor. Much of the pathway going north from Carroll Lane is flanked by older growth and large specimen trees, wooded lawn areas interspersed with one and two historic commercial buildings, or business entrances with lawns, landscapes, planted berms on the road frontage. Yet it is noted that most of what's vis- visible about the business is along the .5-mile stretch are lawns, trees, non-residential buildings, landscapes and planted berms. Um, again, I, from Liz's prior comment, I understand that there are landscaping and berms that were done to help screen these industrial uses, but I just drove along Route Nine and, you know, these industrial uses are still visible from sections along Route Nine. And that was what we were trying to put into context. We're, essentially, we're trying to put into context with the VRA that we're not going into a pristine, you know, untouched Viewshed area or open space. You know, we are going into a zoning district that supports, you know, existing industrial And then, uh, there was discussions throughout, if you go further north of the Century Aggregate properties, uh, towards the Duchess Mall, how it's much more densely vegetated along there. Um, again, the VRA documents that, um, the facility is not visible from this further north area that's being discussed. Um, and so also the intersection of Route Nine and I-84 is about approximately two miles north of the facility. So we, we would show that, again, you know, while we agree that that's a dense vegetated area, that's an area where there's no visibility of our tower and we just wanted to put that into context. And then regarding the design options, um, we did provide some, uh, design options. I, I, I understand that, um, Liz took issue with the fact that they're not design options, but we would very much submit that color is a design feature and so color is a design option. Um, and we've provided a couple of different options for that, whether it be a full painted brown, two-tone, or a different combination of colors. Um, again, same thing with, uh, stating that we haven't met the code requirement. Uh, we respectfully submit that the color options proposed is satisfying this code requirement. Um, we've also previously discussed a monopine option at prior meetings. Um, if that's something that the board would like us to can further, uh, review, we, we absolutely can propose a monopine. I just had the understanding at prior meetings that a monopine, especially one of 150-foot tall, was not something that this board wanted to entertain, but that's absolutely something we can propose and we can show to this board. Regarding C, um, the finish, either painted or unpainted, um, the site plan set still talks about the galvanized steel, but that's just because no color option has been chosen. In the VRA as well as in the, the photos of real-world examples, we have shown that we're willing to color the tower, but that's just a, a minor note on the plans. We can update once a color option is selected by the board.
Yeah, and just to note, I, I was asking for an illustration, you know, in other words, your tower showing that coloring, not, not part of the plan set.
Okay, yeah.
I think I made that, yeah.
We have in the VRA, we showed like a couple of, we updated some of the photo sims to include that exactly.
Okay.
So right here, we have just the galvanized steel one, and then here's just a full painted brown, and then here's one with a two-tone. So we did include it in the VRA, but if you'd like us to submit it separately?
I mean, I think it would be nice to have an illustration and just an illustration we're not looking.
Like a drawing?
You know, something that is like an eight and a half by 11 page that is just, you know, showing that, that galvanized steel finish.
Sure, we can do that.
That would be helpful.
Uh, and then again, you, well, we just handled that one right now. So regarding the, the monopole with internal antennas, so I just wanted to put it in the context I did in my cover letter, uh, for the May 29th submission, kind of go over why this wouldn't be a preferred option. Um, a monopole with internal antennas is, would be a less, um, it'd be a lesser, lesser quality service tower. Um, basically the equipment that they use now is called remote radio units with the antennas, and they want the remote radio units as close to the antennas as possible. Um, so we would like to install them on the tower and with a monopole, our current design, you could install them on the tower. If you went to a unipole because of the heat that's given off from the remote radio units, they would be nee- necessary to install them at ground level and then connect with the cable. The length of the cable, while it's only 150 feet plus some, um, that would add latency to the experience of the user. So it, it's just a lesser quality of service. Um, so there, that's reason, one of the reasons why we would, uh, not prefer it. Um, the other issue is that the mono- monopole has all of the antennas for one carrier at the same height. So even though this is a 150-foot tower, we're able to support 12 antennas for Verizon at the 147-foot centerline. If we go to a unipole where it's having the antennas vertically stacked, then you need to take those antennas and squeeze them into a space. So that would necessitate a taller tower. It would approximately, for this type of tower, necessitate almost a 40-foot taller tower, um, because you'd have to take each two antennas and staff them vertically as you go up. This would also reduce colocation ability for the tower because now we're taking up all of the space and not leaving much space for the next carrier to come. And it, it's continued to call it a slender mono- uh, unipole, but just to note that these things are approximately four feet in diameter. So it would be a little bit wider and it would be something that we would think would create more of a, uh, you know, more of a mass in the air, more of a visual profile. Um, again, uh, we, we heard the comments regarding, uh, the silo, the fire tower. Um, and to our point, it's a, a fire tower, this is a little bit discussed in my cover letter. They're normally about 60 feet tall and you find them more located on ridge lines where they can look for fires. To have a 150-foot fire tower, uh, that would seem a little bit out of place. Also, a fire tower doesn't have any components of it that would really hide the antennas. What a fire tower essentially is, is a four-legged lattice tower that's much wider because it has to support a person. Um, so it would really just be a wider lattice tower. I'm not really sure how that would, you know, reduce the visual impact. Um, so that was one of the reasons we didn't think it was necessary to explore it further. Uh, to that point, again, 150-foot silo, that would also seem out of place. This also, although there are, you know, rural uses here, there's no real farmland uses in this exact area, so having the 150-foot silo, again, we would think would be out of place. And there is a- And there is an issue with, you know, some of these things would come cost prohibitive. So that's kind of why we didn't explore it too further is, is at a certain point, you know, you can't build the tower without, you know, making sure it fits within to the budget of Verizon and these other carriers. That, so there is, well, not only from a standpoint of it would be more mass in the air and more, you know, stuff in the air to block the view of the ridge. From a standpoint, there are some of these ideas that just wouldn't be able to be built from a cross-cost prohibitive standpoint. The only comment or question I had regarding the certificate of appropriateness is, who would be the issuing agency for this certi, oh, so it would still be the planning board?
Yeah, it would run concurrently with everything, the planning board. The way it's written into the code is, it's like another set of supplementary regulations, depending on what the project is. And the planning board's very adept at running their reviews concurrently and.
Sure, I reviewed that code section. I did, in my cover letter, go through the triggering items. I don't believe we meet any of them, but we did submit the Phase One archaeological report to kind of confirm that we won't have or not likely to have an archaeological impact. The next comments are.
Let me, while we're talking about that, I was going to comment about that, but why don't I do it now? So, talking about the, starting off with the Battery Monument Site, that's a site that's nearby the project site, not on it. That probably would not make the site of the proposed tower a regulated site under the Towns Code. But it could possibly be a regulated site under the definition, which might require a certificate of appropriateness because the E A F Part One did flag the site as sensitive for archaeological resources. That's why I was indicating before that I think we're really going to need to see a specific sign-off from SHIPO in a letter like we usually do get from them, talking about, while concurring that they don't feel that, based on the Phase One report, that there are any significant archaeological resources there. And if we got a letter like that from SHIPO, then I believe the planning board has the authority under the Town Code provisions in Section one fifty, one thirty-seven, C one, to determine in a resolution, which would normally be in our resolution of approval, to make a determination that a certificate of appropriateness is not required. So I don't agree necessarily with C P L's sort of blanket statement that a certificate of appropriateness is required because I think there is an option for the planning board to follow that if those things pan out, as I'm suggesting they could, and the Phase One archaeological study appears to suggest that, that the planning board can determine that a certificate of appropriateness is not needed.
Can I just respond to why the SHIPO concurrence comes in differently for these types of applications? Or, you can absolutely continue.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just going from our experience with SHIPO. And I know that this particular email that was attached to the E A F appeared as if it were a sign-off from SHIPO, but it's not in a format that the planning board has ever seen before, and it didn't mention anything about archaeological resources. It talked about historic resources. And normally, a letter that we do get from SHIPO where the E A F has flagged the sensitivity for archaeological resources as something that needs to be pursued, we simply get a letter from SHIPO indicating that they've reviewed it and they've made that determination. So I don't think, if they really have signed off, then I don't see why it would be a problem to get a letter from them. And I think it would make it a lot easier for the board to simply determine that a certificate of appropriateness is not going to be required.
Well, we have no objection to that. I just wanted to, you know, why it comes in differently. For these types of applications, they not only have to go through a SHIPO review, but they also have to go through a N I P A review. And so they have an electronic filing database that combines the reviews. So this is, for all the times that I've been doing it, this is how we get a SHIPO sign-off, is the SHIPO concurrence email. But I have no objection to a further follow-up with SHIPO to confirm.
Okay.
And then just the reason why it was marked with the E A F, if this CRISMAP that I have up, which is attached to the E A F, we are located in an archaeological buffer area, so that's basically what triggered it. So from there, that's what caused my client to do the Phase One archaeological report to confirm that there wasn't a likelihood of an archaeological impact. Again, as another point, we are going on a portion of the property that's already developed and already cleared. We don't have any tree clearing that's involved with our application. So we're fairly confident that we won't have an archaeological impact, but I have no objection to a follow-up with SHIPO.
Okay, perfect.
And then the only thing regarding the E A F is there continues to be, I guess, a comment regarding, and this is sixteen, the expansion of the multi-site use. The only reason, I mean, this isn't a big thing to fight about, but the only reason we've pushed back against that about saying that we're a separate independent use is because the approvals that we'll be getting are going to be separately regulated and separately approved from all of the other uses on the site. Like, we're not applying for an amended site plan approval. We have a separate site plan approval. The special use in the Town Code regulation on wireless facilities, it just is a distinctly separate use, and it'll be regulated separately from all of the other uses on the property. So that's just the only reason we've taken that distinction. And then the only comment on the plans is, one, is that the lease area, we do have the details, the lease area is shown on Sheet C two. We also did provide in our original filing a copy of the memorandum of lease, which has a legal description. But the reason why it's important for us to have the lease on the property is just because the wireless code actually, for the rear yard and the side yard setback, they have a definition in your wireless code that makes it so that we have to have our setbacks based off of the lease area and not the property line. Now, this is a two-foot difference for where we're located, but that's why we've included our setbacks on the bulk table are to the lease area. The one that's to the front of the property, it's defined in the code as the street setback. So it's not a property line setback, it's a setback from the street. So that's the reason why we've included the lease area in our bulk table. And we would include it in more of the sheets, except for the fact that my engineer is telling me that that'll create more confusion, it'll just be too many lines. But it is on Sheet C two, and we can put it in some other areas. We just don't want to put it on every plan sheet, that's all.
Okay, I didn't really notice it on the site plan sheet, so maybe it's a matter of.
I looked for it. Maybe it's a really faint line or something like that, because I did see what looked like it might have been a.
It's a matter of labeling it more clearly or something.
I'm wondering if an inset would, I don't know if you guys have already done an inset. I know it's a small area.
We can bold it, and we can maybe do a different color to help make it stand out. But yeah, on Sheet C two, it says right here approximate lease line.
Okay.
So, yeah, but we can try to make it a little bit, stand out a little bit more.
That would be great.
And all the comments I've discussed tonight, we'll obviously, in our next supplemental submission, respond in writing in further detail. We just wanted to have a discussion about some of these with you tonight.
So one of the things, I was flipping through all the papers here, and it's starting to get a pretty good-sized pile for this project. But I did see a number of the sample illustrations of different color towers. And I just wanted to point out, Liz, that, to make sure that you had seen these.
Oh, I mentioned the five sheets that were just, that showed different colors.
And so, I mean, just in terms of the colors and color combinations, I think there is a pretty good sampling that's been provided. That's not the end of the story, but that's part of the story.
Yes, indeed.
And we also included, right now on the screen in the V R A, this is the two-tone option. We tried to get the brown as close to the closest tree line there. And then a full brown one, that would be, again, similar to the above-ground utility poles that are in the foreground. But color is open to whatever the board prefers. We can do a combination of colors, we can do any color. I constantly say, if you wanted the color of the high school football team, we're happy to do that as well. Whatever is the preference of the board, we're happy to do. Color is not something that we really have a preference for.
Well, part of the problem with the football colors is there are at least two different major school districts in the town of Fishgill, and they probably would be conflicting with each other color-wise.
Well, there's the two-tone for you.
It might have to be four-tone.
We can do it red, white, and blue, so when you're looking from the monument, you can see that too, whatever.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that because there's a flagpole on the the monument site, just south of the tower site. And I actually looked at a number of sample stealth technologies, and one of them is a flagpole with an American flag on the top. So I was going to talk about that a little bit later, but I thought that one, of all the different possible stealth technologies, was an interesting variation, which of course does have internal antennas. Unless there's some way that you could retrofit a flag to actually be an antenna. But, no. Anyway, so before I get into some of my comments, I wanted to ask board members to ask questions, make comments. There's quite a bit of stuff to go through. So who would like to start?
I'm just going to reserve my comments till a little bit later. I think my whole thing at this point is trying to see which design is going to be the most aesthetically pleasing. Because as the applicant's attorney said, we can't make it invisible, but we want to try to make it, you know, the best-looking that we possibly can. I'm definitely not in favor of making it into like these, I don't know, clock towers, cell towers, you know, these, they just, they don't look like they belong.
Which one are you saying?
Like the fire tower or whatever, those things. You know, I just, they will, they will definitely stand out, right? Even more so than just the tower. I think also the comment that he made, and I've said this myself all the time when I'm driving, I listen to AM radio all the time, but they have so many power lines that are just going across. And after a while, we don't even realize they're there, right? Because they're there. But, you know, it just becomes part of your, you know, your nature to see them. And, but they're all over the place compared to like, you know, one tower, right? So I think unfortunately, in this day and age, we have to get used to these towers if we want cell phones, unless we all get rid of our cell phones. It's part of how we're living at this point. So just try to find, I like some of the pictures that you sent. I would like to see if we could somehow make it so that it blends in with the sky and almost like you said, maybe on the bottom, be a little brown with the trees. I don't know, but I think that's what we should be looking at, is trying to figure out how to make this the most aesthetically pleasing that we possibly can at this point, right? But we'll talk about that as we go along.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Felix at this point, really, that the big discussion would be color and how we would, you know, make it best suited for us. But, you know, with that said, I know, I appreciate Liz's very detailed, you know, comments, but with that said, I think what the applicants provided too has allowed us to have this level of discussion. So it is a very detailed submittal package as well, so I think that should be recognized. And I think, you know, the efforts to date have been, you know, really good as well. I know we've had some others in the past where it was more like pulling teeth. So in this case, it really has allowed us to get to this level of discussion, which should be commended as well.
Fred?
I'm going way out. I'd like to see a pole that changes color with the heat. So when it's cold, it goes white.
Like a mood ring?
You got it.
So not necessarily depending, not necessarily depending on weather or cloud or blue sky, but just in general, just constantly changing color. That's an idea.
We'll talk to the Empire State Building and see how they do.
Anything other than that, Fred?
I just, I just think, you know, a pole going there, as I drive by it, you have the white buildings on the bottom, you know, and you just pick up the white buildings. So I'm going to say the pole should be sort of white on the bottom, believe it or not, because if you look over that way, that's what you see, you see white. And then maybe this blue sky or whatever you're going to see. But it also depends upon the location, because some of that pole is going to blend into the mountains from depends upon where you are. You know, so you're going to look at the place that's going to be the least desirable for most people to see it. And I'm going to tell you, when I'm driving, I'm not going to look up at the top of the pole when I'm going by it. Really not. I just, that's a distance one, so.
Jody or Kevin, any thoughts?
I'm reminded of an old line by Paul Simon, which is, "One man's ceiling is another man's floor." And it's kind of an interesting discussion about what you see and perceive driving up and down that particular corridor. But at the end of the day, I'm with Felix. I mean, we've got to work at trying to make it as invisible as possible, recognizing that that the service is required and there's just no way of getting around the capability that we need to provide that service. Now, the experience that I have is not with a hundred and fifty-foot pole, but a shorter pole. And one of the keys to make it invisible is the landscaping associated with the bottom infrastructure that supports the pole. So you need like twenty-foot trees or something, some kind of road that goes around a fence area. And inside of the fence area, there's infrastructure that supports the tower itself and to make that invisible from the road. So that's one. And then the second thing is the height of the tower. How do we make that as invisible as possible, and that's some sort of a color thing. But at the end of the day, there is a significant amount of, I mean, it is a corridor into the beautiful town of Fishgill, but there's also a significant amount of infrastructure already there.
And just one quick response, we did strategically locate this behind the existing buildings on the property so that exactly that, we wanted to screen the base of the facility, because that seems to be, I know the monopole itself is visible, but a lot of people don't like the industrial use of the equipment compound. So we did strategically locate it on the property so that there are no views of the base of the facility or the equipment compound, because the existing buildings on the property screen it, and then the existing topography and off-site uses screen it from further away.
And you also have the trees on front that you just have to say, we won't take them away, and you've got some of that coverage.
And to respond to that comment, we will absolutely put the note on the southern side as well as the northern side. We did speak with the landowner. We're absolutely in keeping with preserving these trees.
No cost.
So you're okay with adding a note to the effect of preserving the existing trees?
Correct. We just confirmed that with the landowner, so we can absolutely add that note to the plans.
Okay.
I have a question. Do you have to have a light on the top of that at night?
No, no, we do not. So light is only required if an F A A requirement exists. That usually only is triggered when you get above two-hundred feet, or if you're close to an airport. So we have actually submitted with this application in the first submittal an F A A node, a determination of no hazard to air navigation, which means no lights required.
Yeah, the blinking red light is sometimes nice.
It'd be annoying.
Yeah, so we try to make sure we build it underneath the requirement that we would have to have that.
So on this side, any questions, comments?
Yeah, I have a few comments.
Go ahead.
Like, I've been living in this town for thirty-five years and driven up that route quite, quite a few times. And between the quarries and the, different between there and. And between the quarries and the, different between there and the, down in the Colespringe, the plaza and everything else, it's quite an eclectic mix of storage buildings, body shops, a hotel that has a sale of tools going on. I think, not to disparage it or make people in that area, but like you said, this tower is not going to make that big of a thing that I think everybody's ready. And really, you can paint it different colors and it's... Somebody might think the white looks invisible, and somebody thinks the brown looks invisible, and somebody thinks the green looks invisible. And, you know, the fact that, you know, for the past 20 years, we've had a burnt-out Duchess Mall, you know, to the entrance of our beautiful town of Fishkill, everybody's saying. Kind of, you know, and I'm hoping that that will get resolved, but I think that, you know, what you're addressing, and I know there's no way, I don't think you're going to be able to see the base of this building because of the berm and just knowing the topography and driving up and down. And like you said, most people hopefully are not going to be like staring at the thing and then run into somebody on the other side of the road. I think if anything, like you said, if you can come up with a color that, you know, like you said, if it's the white or whatever because of the background of the mountains, you know, like certain times of the year, all the trees are gone, and it's going to look dark and gray and whatever. And then certain times of the year, it's going to look real green. So it's something that possibly that as you make it, it'll tarnish to the patina of the area. I think that might be the best option. I don't know. That was just my thought.
Robbie?
I don't know if I have to say something. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I don't think it would be a matter of a resident driving and going, "Look at that." I think it's, I totally understand where Liz is coming from. Yes, that area, perfect explanation of being very eclectic. There's a lot going on, and there are some areas that really do need improvement. And I think that's what we're trying to get away from. We don't want to add more distraction to that area. I understand it's a pole. I get it. Yeah, a fire tower. I like that idea. I'm sorry, I do. And if you go on 301 and you're cutting across from the Taconic to Route 9, I do believe there is a fire tower off on the left. There's some sort of a fire tower structure up there. Maybe it is, and I always thought it was a fire tower. Maybe for all I know, it is one of these towers. Anyway, would that stand out? I don't know. I'd have to see a picture of it before I could just decide. But I think trying to camouflage whatever we put there absolutely has to be done.
I just don't think feasibility, like you said, is, it's, it's that, that part of it, I don't think is going to work. And it's like you said, it's an absolute large structure. It's going to look massive.
It's a necessary evil in today's society. We, like Kevin was saying, it's a necessary thing. Where else can we put it? And it's a problem.
I think this, you know, I took a picture of a cell tower setup. Unfortunately, it's on a building in Harrison going over the train tracks on this side of this apartment building. And I'm telling you, like, you want to talk about holy cow, like looking at something that's obtrusive, whatever. I'm saying to people that live in there and everything else, this is a much gentler choice to me.
I think they have the right property. I think one of the benefits is the fact that this area has the mix of the industrial uses, but also the fact that it has a lot of vegetation along this. The road, as you see, the green areas are where it's visible, and these are almost directly in front of the actual property. As you go further north, the road bends, and that bend in the road helps screen all the views with that, you know, intervening vegetation. And as you go further south, the change in topography also helps screen the view. So to your point, I completely understand that the tower that's on Route 9, right in the Village of Fishkill, right across from the Walmart, you know, that's a tower in a location that has no screening, so it can be seen from further distances. So even though it's a shorter tower, it's a tower that has probably got more visibility because of just the area of the location. Now, sometimes you have the coverage gaps in an area where you don't have any screening or tall trees. I think it's just, you know, this is a property where we're close to where the gap in coverage is. You know, we're not on a mountain ridge trying to beam it down. We're right in the area where it's needed. And while there are some visibility of the tower documented in the VRA, again, those photos are still photos from along a roadway. When you're traveling along at 55 miles per hour, even if you do see it, I mean, I drive along a lot of roadways, eventually you just start to ignore the cell towers that are in the distance.
And we just got two electronic billboards that they just took all the vegetation down by going in down at the Route 9, down by the quarry and stuff like that, so. I don't know.
And one final point.
Just making a comment.
Is it the same stretch? You mean the same stretch or?
Yeah, this right, right after the Duchess Mall on the left-hand side.
Yeah, that's a whole nother story that we'll talk about later.
And then just one final point. We do support the town trying to embedder this area and provide more uses along this gateway corridor. And it's just, as a matter of fact, in the 21st century and going forward, people are going to want to have these personal wireless services, these cell phone services, to develop in this area. So the fact that we're filling in the gap in coverage, that might help with the development in the area because it's indiscriminate to the type of uses that are along there, whether they be rural use for bikers or riders or people that are trying to go hiking, or if it's, you know, someone is working at a work site or someone that's, you know, working at a hotel or whatever the type of use is, these wireless services are necessary for those services. I think, you know, there's a study from CTIA I can show, almost over 80% of all 911 phone calls are from a wireless device. So there is a public safety importance to making sure that you have these services all throughout seamlessly in your town.
So I did look at a number of examples of stealth designs for cell towers online. And it's pretty easy to find a number of different things to look at. One thing that was kind of interesting was some places are using artistic or sculpture forms to house antennas. And that wouldn't work very well for this site. Those are typically more urban settings where they're, you know, like maybe commercial development in a mixed-use area or a college campus or other things like that. Then I also looked at examples of water towers and fire towers and silos and monuments. And I just, I couldn't find any that really looked like they would fit this site very well. So I'm not sure with a lot of those, it's nice to think about them and mention them, and you should certainly go look online and see if you can find some to see what I'm talking about. But I think these would look out of place in this project setting. But getting back to that flagpole option, I was kind of interested in that when I saw it. And what I, you know, what I would suggest, I'd like to see anyway, is what would a flagpole option look like on this site, especially given the proximity of that Battery's historic site down the road, along with kind of a more technological explanation of how interior antennas actually can work because they do, and they have been used in other areas. And I just think that actually the compatibility of something like that might be kind of interesting in this setting, and it might be interesting to take a look at what that would look like in the simulations. That's my own opinion. I'd like to get some feedback from others as to what you think. But, so I understand that, you know, the applicant has been indicating the difficulty of placing internal antennas inside of a monopole. But I'd like, I'd like a little bit more information on that. I mean, it's one thing to hear you discuss it before us, but it's another to actually get a little bit more technical information about it, what would actually be required to make it work and what would it look like if it could work on this site. So that's, to me, that's the one stealth technology that I think actually might make sense for this site. But then again, I think the color combinations of whatever kind of a pole we end up going with also makes a big difference. And if we're going to be looking at color, you know, two-tone color options, I kind of like the shadow beige on the bottom portion with the pale gray on the top portion that you've already illustrated. It seems like, just from the standalone photos that you provided, and I think there's one in the VRA that does have something like it. Yeah. You know, if that's all we're going to go with in terms of a design option, that's probably the one that I think would work best on this site.
We agree. We think that would work best. And just with the flagpole, unless you want to continue, I'm sorry if I cut you off.
No, that's a good place.
With the flagpole, again, it's not that the antennas can't go inside. So the antennas have these remote radio units, so they go with the antennas. Now, previously, they used to install remote radio units at the base of the facility. They would be located on ground next to other equipment that powers the antennas. The problem is, is that now with, you know, 5G technology and even 4G LTE technology, they need those remote radio units closer to the antennas. And it's just that by putting them at the base, you've added a cable which creates latency issues. The other issue with that is that the flagpole, it won't be slender like you normally see a flagpole. Again, to have the, you know, the antennas stacked vertically, and we can provide more detailed responses on this, but it probably would necessitate 185-foot to 190-foot tower now. And even with doing that, we've taken up the co-location space or a majority of it for a next user. So the problem is, is that when, maybe the second user can locate below us, but that third user, whether it be T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, or another carrier, they may have to build their own tower because we've taken up all the co-location space on this one. And again, because of the size of the antennas, to even stack two next to each other and then stack them vertically, it would have to be approximately a 44-inch to a four-foot wide diameter. So it becomes larger and it's just, it doesn't look exactly like most flagpoles, but we can absolutely provide a rendering of it, and we can show you some additional information about why, you know, from a technical standpoint, it would be a less quality tower.
That would be helpful because all of what you're saying, I think, you know, the board, it would be helpful to have it in writing and in an actual illustration that explains the technology.
That's all I'm asking for.
We can do that. We can have our RRF engineers kind of put together exactly what I'm stating, but in a more technical format.
Yeah.
Because it would be like a garrison flag, right? Like big.
Well, yeah.
Garrison flags are big. You're not going to have them on a little pole, but I mean, they're pretty darn big.
Well, that's the thing. Once we build a tower of 150-foot height, there is something called flag etiquette. So then we have to comply with New York, no, USA flag etiquette. So then, yeah, the flag has to be of a certain size, and then it's going to be really, really big. And the other issue that comes with a flagpole at that size, it generally will have, you know, it's not going to be for the people around there, but the people on site, there's going to be a noise of usually the chain that's hoisting up the flag will, in a windy day, bang against the pole. That's just a smaller component.
It also has to be lit if it's up all the time, if you're going to have a light. And I think it's, well, people are going to be looking at it as opposed to a flagpole. So people are going to be more annoyed at the flag than they are...
Uh-oh. Correct. Flag etiquette would require ground lighting facing up so you light up the flag.
In the normal case, what is the diameter of the pole? I mean, said for the military.
So for the flagpole or a unipole, just installing the antennas inside, because you have to have the two antennas next to each other, it's approximately 44 inches in diameter.
But in this, in this other normal case...
This other, it gets smaller as it goes to the top. I believe it's about, what, two-foot diameter?
Yeah, a little bit under two feet on the top.
On the top portion. At the base of the tower, it's a little bit wider. But for a monopole, this proposed design, it's about two feet at top. And then the antennas that are on there probably come out about five feet, six feet from the face of the pole.
So if you go with the flagpole, the interior one, it will be four feet all the way to the top?
Yeah. So like, again, because the antennas have to go inside, and not only the antennas have to go inside, all of the cables have to go inside. So you have to also have an internal pole inside the flagpole that you mount the antennas to, run the cables up in, and then you have to, what they call a stealth canister. You basically create an RF-transparent material that goes around it. But you have to have it be wide enough that it, you know, it can fully conceal all of the antennas. So what you see mostly is the flagpoles were an older design. And if you've seen most of the flagpole sites, they have them down in Westchester where I live. A lot of them are actually, with the new installations, are bumping out the flagpole and doing what is known as a canister expansion. So it's a slender flagpole, maybe like 50% of the way up, and then it bumps out to that 44-inch wide diameter going up. And it, it does look a little bit out of place, but in some areas, it does, it does work. It's just in this particular area, I'm not sure if it would, but we're happy to provide additional documentation on that.
And aren't some of the flagpole designs that you're talking about, they don't actually have the flag? They're just, it's just the cylindrical pole?
Correct. So there's both options. So there's the unipole is what we call it. Again, those are usually more in, you know, flat ground areas. And again, you know, just with the newer technology, if you're building it to house the antennas for today, the antennas that Verizon needs to fill this gap in service and bring the network to the current standards, that would require about a 44-inch diameter. It's, previously, they could do it a little bit slender, but again, those towers usually would have one, maybe two carriers on the tower. It takes up co-location space because instead of having all the antennas at one level, then you're going to have them stacked vertically, and that just takes up more space.
And it probably would increase the height of the...
Absolutely. For, just for Verizon's purposes, because you're going to take all the antennas and stack two by two, it's like each antenna sector, you would call it about a 10-foot increase in height. So for these to get all the way up from our 150-foot, you'd probably be going up to about 185 feet, almost maybe taller than that. Because the center line would be 185, so you'd have to do the top above it to conceal it. So your code limits our tower to about 185 feet, but in this particular location, we also need variances. So I think at that height, again, we can review this more. We would trigger more variances because we'd likely need a variance from the street as well. And then we'd just be increasing our variance request for the ZBA.
Okay, so...
I just wanted to scroll in here.
Yeah, go ahead.
To visualize.
Come on, right up to the microphone.
Just to visualize, it looks more like a smokestack from a diameter perspective.
A smokestack?
Yeah.
Okay, so again, I think Liz summed it up well that just providing, you know, sufficient details on what that would be like and what the, you know, minuses of it would be, I think would be helpful for the record.
And is it, is it fair to say that this is the only stealth design the board is interested in, I think?
That's what I'm hearing so far.
Right. Okay, good. That's very helpful.
Other than the color design options that we're talking about.
Right.
Which I, you know, I think we've already seen the examples of that, so...
Right. So there are none of the other ones? Because, you know, then there's no reason to...
Yeah, let's put that to bed.
That would be, that would be helpful.
So the other stealth samples of water towers and monuments and...
Gigantic trees.
Gigantic trees.
I didn't ask for a gigantic. I know what they look like.
Those are not something that we want to pursue.
Okay, that's very helpful.
We can absolutely provide that. We just wanted to provide the context that it likely would recreate a taller tower, a bigger tower.
Yep. I was going to just mention in a little bit more detail the email chain that we received from Edward Buseck. That included correspondence from New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation regarding the potential historic significance of the site of the Battery Historical Monuments located on Route 9 just south of the proposed Homeland Tower site. And it's interesting, in that email chain, SHIPO does indicate that the Battery site was not... And it's interesting, in that email chain, SHIPO does indicate that the Battery site was not previously identified by their office or put into their records. And SHIPO further states that no resources were previously determined as historic, meaning National Register eligible or listed. But then, again, the Town of Fishkill Historic and Cultural Resources map, Figure 1, that was adopted as part of the Town Code in the recently enacted Section 150, 137, Historic Structures and Sites Regulations, does identify those historical markers, 19 and 20, the Battery and Three Batteries as locally significant. So that's, that's where we start to get into that conversation about whether or not that would make the Tower site a regulated site, but it's not on the site per se. And SHIPO has no records of really any information about the Battery Historic Markers site. So I think that leaves us pretty much with the archaeological sensitivity question, which is not covered in Mr. Busek's email, but I just wanted to kind of tag that along with it as something that we've already talked about. So Mr. Busek's email is a part of the record, although we have not opened a public hearing yet, so there is no public hearing record to put it into at this point. Couple of corrections, revisions actually, in the site plan set. We already talked about the tree, existing trees on the frontage. In the property survey by Beatty and Watson, it shows as labeling approximate location center of proposed 130-foot monopole, and I think that should be corrected to 150 feet. That's actually on two parts of that survey map. One is the whole site and one's a blow-up of the proposed cell tower site. So that's just a correction needed. Also, on Sheet C3, the enlarged site plan, there's a note on proposed signage on Gate that says C2/C5, so that means Sheet 2, C Detail, sorry, Sheet C5, Detail 2, for Detail. That Detail's actually on Sheet C6. So if that could be corrected, that would be appreciated.
They changed their sheet younger.
And so then, depending on what we end up deciding about stealth of a possible monopole or flagpole type versus a regular pole looking at different color, color options, whenever we end up deciding on what the solution will be, that should end up as a color rendering in the site plan set.
We could absolutely do that.
But we don't know what that'll be yet, so that's a future thing. Okay. Any questions or comments from you, Dominic, at this point?
Yes, several, Mr. Chairman, thank you for providing me with the opportunity. As, I'm sure the board is aware, you know, the shot clock is running on this application, it's 150 days. And 150 days started when they submitted the application, according to the Town Code. It was told for a three-month period beginning in January, so that ran through April. And at the board's May meeting, you circulated for lead agency. So your lead agency should be established at this point. You circulated shortly after the May 9th meeting. And I'm not entirely sure if the full 30 days has run since the notice.
No, it's May 23rd.
Yes, but.
Yeah, so that, the 30-day time period for that would expire on June 22nd.
Got it. You know, it's highly unlikely that any other agency would dispute the planning board's assertion of lead agency. And so the Town Code, 150, let's see, I have it in front of me, 150, 126, regarding the processing of telecommunications towers applications, H deals with the planning board's review. And the step that you have been up to up to this point was regarding an initial review, establishing yourself as lead agency and identifying whether or not any variances are required. I think it's fair to say that you're at that point in the process. The very next step would be the conducting of a public hearing. That is the next procedural step. In my opinion, I think that it's been very helpful for the board at this point to have had a full discussion regarding the substance of different concerns that you have and also options that you're asking the applicant to consider. But being mindful of the fact that the shot clock is running, my suggestion would be that you consider scheduling a public hearing at this time, especially as the board is considering various different options that the public may have thoughts as to not only those options, but also other suggestions that they may want you to consider as well. Having those earlier in the process would be better than having, you know, the project go down the road perhaps too far in one direction or another without having public input.
I kind of like that idea. Liz, what do you think in terms, I know in your memo, you kind of indicated that there were enough revisions and additional information that you wouldn't suggest necessarily moving ahead with things like setting a public hearing at this point. But knowing how we've approached public hearings in the past, and probably in this case, not even having an expectation that if we scheduled the hearing for July, that we would close it at the July meeting, we'd probably keep it open. At least until, you know, the plan revisions have been sufficiently addressed. And, you know, again, this could be something that we will hear from a number of people who want to comment on it, so. That might not be a bad idea.
I think it's a good idea. Get it started.
Agree.
Other board members like that? Definitely, I think it's time. All right, well, would somebody like to make a motion to schedule a public hearing on this matter for the July, I think it's July 13th, is that meeting?
11th.
Oh, 11th, sorry, yeah, thank you. For the July 11th meeting at 7:00 PM or as soon thereafter as possible. Would someone like to make a motion to that effect?
Mode.
Okay, Robbie moves it. Belik seconds it. Any further discussion? Anyone in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any extensions? All right, that passes seven to zero. And we'll need to decide where and how many public hearing signs we'll need. I think it's pretty clear, on this site, there's only really one place to put it, which is at the site entrance. So one sign at the site entrance on Route 9D. Nine, sorry.
On Route 9, yeah.
Route 9. Scratch the D part.
Yes.
All right. Oh, I'll just mention, we did receive a response from Duchess County Planning and Development indicating that this is a matter of local concern and they had no comments. Which was interesting, but factual. All right, do we have anything else that we need to hear on this particular matter tonight? I think we've covered quite a bit of ground.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
So if, if there's a chance that you can get, you know, as much revision and especially the information on the one potential stealth technology that we're looking at with the flagpole or taller, thicker monopole with interior antennas, the submission date for the July 11th meeting is what?
June 26, by 2:30.
Okay, thank you, Debbie.
We will do our best to make responses by then.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good. We're doing pretty well, I think I would suggest an actual short five-minute break. All right? Okay, so we'll reconvene at, we'll reconvene at quarter of nine.
I want to get up and do a little dance.
This is a luxury.
Oh, my goodness.
We're doing so well.
Good night, congratulations, enjoy that little tiny.
Here we go, all right.
Hi Dad, this is how my dad does.
Okay, Liz, hurry up with your chalk there.
Yes, we had the same problem. We did do a good job, from what I can see. Good, thank you.
Okay, are we ready to start back up? Okay, the next item on the agenda is Basis Industrial Route 9D Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit or to review the submission made by the applicant's representative on May 29, 2024, and a draft resolution of preliminary site development plan and special use permit approval and to consider its adoption. Welcome back.
Good evening, for the record, Corey Salama from Ziren and Stein, it's here today on behalf of the applicant. When we were last before your board, you had asked us to provide you some architectural materials, some information about our signage, and then obviously, as you stated, authorized your attorney to draft a draft resolution. So I'm gonna turn it over to our architect, Chris Michalik, to walk through our architectural, and then at your board's discretion, we'd like to walk through the resolution with you as well.
Okay, perfect.
Hi, Chris Michalik.
We actually do have a material sample board, so we'll pass that around as you're talking.
Yeah, for sure. I think I'm gonna go to the elevations, that might be a better reference at this point. Whoops. There we go. Let's go to the front. Okay, so, since the last time we were here, we were requested to do some, a little bit more look at the signage package, I think I'll start there. What we did do is, in our latest submission, is that we modified the two monument signs to be code-compliant in their size and height, width, all that stuff. We modified two of the kind of location wall signs, the loading and the office, to also, to be a little bit smaller, so that those are code-compliant. And we remain with, then with just one sign variance request for the main public storage side on the front of the building. And then, as well, we were requested to drop off the material board that you have passing around right now. With, you know, we've got a brick base. We have a cementitious panel siding above that base. The corners of the building, these kind of areas right in here, the brick will go all the way up to the parapet. The siding is this light gray material, it's essentially, it's hardy plank, if you're familiar with that material. The brick will be along, you know, the entire, will be all the way around the building at the base. The roof is a, it's a mansard roof in certain locations. That, that material is also indicated on the material board. The roofing, it's an architectural shingle to mimic a slate look. And then, all those materials are consistent around the building, where we, the colors are consistent. We have an Ephesus panel to break up the massing on the sides and the rear. And the cement panel is also wraps around the corner at the, at the sides here. Any questions that I can answer? But it's, the brick is a real brick, it's a full, you know, brick veneer, it's not just that thin brick stuff, so we just want to make that clear as well.
I'm just curious, what, what color is the orange?
It's Publix, Public Storage Orange.
Public Storage?
Yeah, they, they have their own orange that they've patented, yes. So it's a branded color. And the, everything that's shown on here will be an accent, either Ephesus or metal, like the canopies are metal. That'll be painted that orange, and then the sign is gonna be that same orange.
You're gonna have one sign?
One main wall sign, yeah, the public storage. And then there's two other smaller signs, one above the loading doors that just says loading, and then one above the office that just says office. The windows are a dark bronze aluminum, pretty standard commercial storefront. Also on the material board.
Any other questions? I was just gonna mention, there's no CPL memo tonight on this project because basically it was simply the things that you mentioned that you submitted. But any other questions, either Liz or John, at this point?
Not for me.
I did, maybe I was confused about the directions, but there was some suggestion about a sidewalk? That, it confused me a little bit, there's a sidewalk proposed.
Yeah, there's.
A crosswalk.
When we get to the resolution, we're gonna talk about that.
Okay, good, that's it.
Great. Well, I'm here if anything else comes up.
Okay. One thing I was gonna mention, since there was no new submission and no, you know, revised site plan sets, there will be a couple of things that'll need to be revised, assuming we get through the resolution of preliminary approval tonight. So, one example is in the new signs details and submissions, it changes the two monument signs, and so those references on the site plan sheet will have to be updated. And, let's see, there was, there was also, I think I had made a suggestion at the last meeting in May regarding that upon termination of the gas station lease, the right-out-only driveway onto Route 9D would be closed. And notes are added to the plan to that effect, except that they don't talk about the continuation of the sidewalk that would go, would fill in that area once that was closed. So that's gonna be a note that's gonna need to go on those plan sets also. But with those couple of things in mind, and I don't know if there are gonna be any other things like that that we want to talk about tonight, but we might as well go right to the resolution and review that and see what we got tonight with the resolution.
Sure. As the board requested at last month's meeting, I did prepare a draft resolution of preliminary approval. The ones that was circulated to you should be draft number five dated June 10th. This is, again, a resolution of preliminary approval for both site development plan and special use permit for the project. Just so the board's aware, and I'm sure you are already, but the purpose of preliminary approval is, it's not. Just so the board's aware, and I'm sure you are already, but the purpose of preliminary approval is, it's not final approval. It's not meant to represent that all conditions have been met, or the project is near-ready for, for construction. But it's really to establish that they've proceeded along the application path sufficiently so that they can then go off and obtain various different approvals from other boards, such as, like, there were other agencies rather, and other boards. In this case, from the Zoning Board of Appeals, as well as the New York State Department of Transportation, and, and any others that are required. So this project, you know, has been described in the first couple pages of the resolution. Page one contains a recitation of, of everything. Just so that we're all clear, the proposed project consists of the redevelopment of a 4.98 acres of property. It's located within the general business zoning district. The redevelopment shall consist of the demolition of the existing Red Pepper Diner and Orange County Transit Buildings for the construction of a 75,057-square-foot, two-story self-storage facility with a lower basement level of storage and loading area, a 2,276-square-foot fast-food establishment, and a 3,045-square-foot car wash. That's the project. The existing Sunoco Station and Food Mart shall remain. Did I make a mistake?
The 75,057, that's just the first floor and the second floor. When you add in the basement, I think that number should be 112,584.
Would it be the board's preference to have the overall number?
It's, that's with the basement, first floor, and second floor? So that's, so each plate is 35 and change roughly, and so the total number is 112,584. That's why we have to go.
Could you repeat the total again, Corey?
112,584.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Apologize, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no, it's quite all right. The application was formally accepted by the planning board on May 11 of 2023. It was referred to all appropriate reviewers, including the Chelsea Fire District. And in my resolution, I actually repeated Fire District twice, so apologize for, for that. It was also referred to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development. They issued a referral response on June 7, 2023, recommending that the board rely on your own study of the facts for this particular project. The board held a public hearing on March 14, 2024, and you also closed the public hearing that same night. The resolution goes on to identify the fact that the board has adopted a negative declaration for the project on April 11, 2024. Beginning on page three, the resolution goes through the requirements for site development plan approval, and continues on page four regarding the appropriate findings that are made in connection with considering a special use permit approval. And then, beginning on page four, there are a number of conditions that are laid out in connection with this preliminary approval. And as I said earlier, this is preliminary approval. The applicant will need to satisfy these conditions and also return to the board to request final conditional approval, at which time the board will also be, consider appropriate conditions at that time. But these conditions that are outlined it now, including addressing the outstanding engineering comments, including those made by not only the town engineer, but the town planner and the town traffic consultant. The last review memo was dated May 7, 2024. And there are outside agency approvals that are required, including for the New York State Department of Transportation, for the traffic improvements. And including in here, we made the specific recommendation that, and I think this is what, what is subject to discussion, is taking into consideration the Town of Fishkill's finding that a new crosswalk on the south side of the intersection of Route 9D and Pappas Lane would be an improvement over existing conditions. That's how I suggested that. Would you like me to stop at that point so that we can clarify that if needed?
Yeah, why don't we talk about that one? So so I know the site plans that were most recently updated and submitted for the May meeting actually show a new crosswalk on the north side of the intersection, which actually is where it, it hooks up to the sidewalk on the west side of Route 9D. There was a suggestion by Liz that we reference the possibility of a crosswalk on the south side of the intersection as well. That's why, all right, well, that's what, where the confusion came in.
Okay, let, let, do you want me to, you go.
Well, no, if, if that's not correct, then that's where the new wording came from, which I think is not correct.
Right.
Okay, so why don't you explain?
So when I saw the wording said the planning board's finding about the crosswalk on the south side, I thought, oh, did I miss something? And so I pulled out the plans and looked, and it had always been proposed on the north side because it does connect to a sidewalk.
Yeah.
And so I put that in my notes when I was reviewing the resolution with question marks, because it didn't seem quite right to me. And I was trying to explain away why on the south side, it wouldn't make sense, because there's no sidewalk over there.
All right, that's not how I interpreted your comments.
Okay, sorry.
So this is where, when you get a lot of people commenting on the resolution, that starts getting a little confusing.
I don't have my glasses.
And I have to apologize, there, there were a number of drafts that went back and forth, and then also, at one point, for some reason, and I think this was a glitch, but the document itself became formatted for 12 inches by 12 inches paper. And, of course, that's, you know, no, you know, I don't have paper that's 12 inches by 12 inches. And no matter what I could do, I could not change, like, there was something, you know, that got glitched in the code. And so I had to actually recreate, you know, a new document that try, and I tried to pull in all of the various comments. So I know that there were some that, that didn't get pulled forward that you wanted to discuss tonight.
Okay, so I think the revised wording of this 2A should read as follows. I'll, I'll read the whole sentence. So approval of the New York State Department of Transportation for the traffic improvements and adjustments for the driveways for the project, taking into consideration wait a second. Taking into consideration the Town of Fishkill's finding that a proposed crosswalk within the New York State right-of-way on the north side of the intersection of Route 9D and Pappas Lane would be an improvement over existing conditions. And scratch the wording, new crosswalk on the south side of the intersection of Route 9D and Pappas Lane. So I can go over that again, Debbie, if you need that wording.
Would be helpful if it was a little slower. But you can, you can bring it to me next week.
So, basically, that's as new wording, revised wording is now accurately reflecting what we wanted to say. Okay, so I'll, I'll just read it again one more time. Approval of the New York State Department of Transportation for the traffic improvements and adjustments for the driveways for the project, so there are no changes yet. Taking into consideration the Town of Fishkill's finding that A, and here's the new wording, proposed crosswalk within the New York State right-of-way on the north side of the intersection of Route 9D and Pappas Lane. And then, scratch, new crosswalk on the south side of the intersection of Route 9D and Pappas Lane. And then, continue, would be an improvement over existing conditions. Okay? All right, so I think we're okay on that one then.
Yeah, and I, I'm just going to own up to the cause of that confusion. I got to the review of the resolution, I think, after most of you did. And the only thing I didn't see in there was the mention of the crosswalk. And unfortunately, I did put the south instead of north in my comment, so that's on me, sorry.
We're, we're getting there. It's all good.
And it's hard to tell what direction you're dealing with anyway, because of the way Route 9D goes across things.
Okay.
There you go.
So I think we're okay now.
All right, then, continuing on, the other approvals include the approval for the Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health for extension of water and sewer to the site. Anything identified in EAF or otherwise required as well. And then, lastly, obtaining necessary variances from the Zoning Board of Appeals, including, number one, the floor area ratio requirement is 0.4, and the proposed floor area ratio is 0.58 as it relates to the lower basement level of storage and loading area. Number two, the zoning set pack required for the proposed drive-through facilities, including speakers and et cetera, is no less than 150 feet from the boundary of any residential use. Yet the proposed setback to the R-15 line is 133 feet. Number three, additional variances are required relating to signage areas in excess of allowed signed areas, which includes, excuse me, which requires careful consideration, given the site's location within the gateway corridor along Route 9D, as set forth in the comprehensive plan update of 2023. For example, for one of the proposed signs, a wall sign for the proposed storage building, a 68-foot square foot sign is allowed, yet a 151.25-square-foot sign is proposed, which is 2.2 times the allowed size of 68 square feet. Number four, a variance for the number of parking spaces as 119 are required for the proposed site development, with 50 proposed, which may be sufficient. And number five, there are seven required loading spaces, yet two are provided. A waiver may be provided by the planning board for two loading spaces, and a variance is needed for three of the required loading spaces.
Got two comments, if I could?
Please.
With the basement included, the parking number goes up to 156 required from 119? And unless I'm mistaken?
There you go.
I believe at the last planning board meeting, we discussed that we weren't gonna, we were just going to go get variances for the loading spaces, so it was going to be, seven spaces are required. We're providing two. We're going to get variances for five. I thought that's how we left it.
Is that what was applied for in the?
Yes.
Okay, okay, okay.
So how, what wording should we use there?
I think we take out the waiver language. That entire subclause comes out. So it would say, there are seven required loading spaces, yet two are provided. And semicolon, a variance is needed for five of the required loading spaces.
Makes life simpler.
I'm an old English major. I like my semicolons. The other conditions are that the applicant shall reimburse the Town of Fishkill for all costs incurred by the town for the review of the site development plan application. And the preliminary approval would be valid for one year and provides the process for requesting an extension. There would be, obviously, additional conditions that would be part of any kind of conditional final approval, if and when the applicant comes back. Seeking conditional final, which are more extensive and typically are intended to relate to things that are absolutely required prior to signing plans and then required to be implemented during construction.
So I had suggested the addition of a fourth condition, and I sent an email around on this to the board. And so that would say submission of final architectural and sign details for the proposed car wash and fast-food establishment to the Town of Fishkill Planning Board for review and approval prior to consideration of conditional final site development plan approval. So the reason for that is because the applicants indicated that final architectural and sign details for those buildings would be provided once tenants are secured. But the applicants also indicated that this is not planned to be a phased development. So I just don't see how we can move ahead with a final site development plan approval at, you know, at the next point, without a condition to that effect. So I had actually suggested that in, in one of the earlier drafts, and for some reason, it was not.
Oh, like, like I said, my apologies, I, you know, I had some formatting issues with the drafts going back and forth. And it had to be recreated.
So that's, that would be a condition number four that I would suggest adding.
I have no objections to that, of course.
Would it be possible to have that condition as?
Wait a second, I, I heard something over here.
Yeah, what about the restaurant? Because you did the car wash.
So the car wash and the restaurant, as far as I know, are still not in terms of finalized design plans and sign plans.
Yeah, I, I was under the impression that you meant both design plans for both of those, since we're not moving forward on an incremental basis.
Right, correct. So does it, both the, the design of the buildings and the sign details for both of those buildings?
Scratch my comment.
Okay. So if that's all right with everyone, we'll add that as a condition four. Okay.
We'll leave that under the heading of other?
Yeah.
I've made those revisions.
Okay.
Debbie, I'll, I have a revised draft, Debbie, that I can send.
So any, any questions or comments from board members, other than those revisions? Or from our consultants?
John, I just want to jump in here for a second.
Okay.
I think it is more a condition of final approval, and I know it's come up in previous meetings, but you know, the, that the, you know, for, the applicant does their part to keep Pappas Lane maintained in a condition that allows for safe travel. And then, you know, obviously, the other part of that concern being that the applicant doesn't own all of the width of Pappas Lane. So I think there's some work to be done in that regard to ensure that the entire width of Pappas Lane is in a maintained condition, because obviously, the public is going to be accessing it. But I think in terms of conditions, it's probably more of a final approval condition, but a big one nonetheless, that is stuck in my mind throughout. You know, safety of the public being paramount.
Yes, I agree. But I think, I think as Dominic said, there are going to be a number of other types of conditions, and that would be one of them
Absolutely, yep.
that we will add as conditions to final approval when we get to that point.
We will be very motivated to keep that up to snuff.
Yeah.
All right. So we've got the two revisions in the resolution. Would someone like to make a motion to approve and adopt the resolution of preliminary approval Basis Industrial Route 9D Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit as reviewed and revised tonight, and to authorize the chair to sign it? Is that?
Jody.
Jody?
Jody.
All right, is there a second?
Sec.
Felix seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven to zero.
Well, thank you very much for all your time and hard work on the application. We appreciate it.
Thank you also. All right, so we look forward to seeing seeing you when we get to the final approval stage.
Debbie, you just sent me the red flag, Chris, then?
Okay, thank you.
I need the red line, then.
Appreciate that.
Of course.
All right.
Good night.
Good night.
See you next week.
Thank you. So I actually had a couple of I'm not sure unless our folks from CPL want to or feel you need to stay, you don't have to. But anyway, I'll.
No offense, I'd like to get to bed early on the second Thursday of the month for once.
Me too. I second that. I'm not a voter.
All right. Okay. All righty. Very good. Well, here's, here's a sampling of one of them. So Debbie's provided me with an interim report on planning board member attendance and training credits taken so far, and I appreciate that. Debbie's very good at, at keeping track of all these things. And so at the halfway point in 2024, first of all, attendance has been, has been generally really good. Most members have been present at all meetings, actually. And training has been pretty good. Again, we're only halfway through the year, but about half of the, the members, I would say, considering carrying over credits from 2023, have made the minimum of three that's required. But the other half are still below the three-hour minimum annual training requirement. So just wanted to reiterate that Debbie and I send announcements around when we hear about training opportunities. There have been some good ones over at Dutchess County Planning Federation. The New York Planning Federation is providing these really good, sure easy to take, learn at lunch, webinars, which I know a lot of you have taken some, and they're usually pretty good and interesting. So, but I think we're moving in a good direction with the training. So let's keep that up. Another thing I was going to mention is very interesting. I've been appointed to a committee of the Hudson Highlands Beard Trail Group. It's called the Visitation Data Committee. So the purpose of that committee is to basically review and assess the work of the Beard Trails visitation management and environmental review consultants, the work that they're doing, to ensure that the traffic counts and pedestrian visitation pattern data that are going to go into the environmental impact statement is adequate to determine the potential impacts of the trail on local communities. So one thing that is, that I wanted to mention is that while I am servant on that committee, I will recuse myself from any review or approval of the or trail matters that might come before the planning board. And one example that's going to be coming up pretty soon is the visitor center project at the former Duchess Manor site on Route 9D. We actually had a pre-application meeting with them, and they were going to be coming in with a kind of a preliminary sketch plan, just for discussion purposes. Could be as early as July. We thought, we thought it might even be tonight.
I thought it might miss meeting, but it happened.
So anyway, I will recuse myself when that comes in. Probably sit in the audience, though, because I'm very interested in seeing their presentation, but I won't participate in the discussion on it. The other, one of the other things I was going to mention was this thing about the new billboards on Route 9 that Bob mentioned. So I can't quite figure this out really, but I talked to Joel Petrus about it, and I think probably Bob may have also. These are LED lighted. So first of all, you have to understand that billboards are generally not permitted, in fact, they're prohibited, except for the one case in the codes which allows for state Department of Transportation to allow billboards near state highways if they're within planned industrial districts. Well, it turns out that the two that Bob was referring to, and I've taken a look at them myself, are actually in the general business district in the town, not in the planned industrial district. One of them may have been considered a non-conforming sign because it was a previous old-fashioned billboard. The second one is new. It's, so it's, that's not non-conforming, that's a new sign. I don't believe it conforms with the prohibition on billboards, and I don't believe it conforms with the town's regulations basically prohibiting, in effect, the new LED or electronic signs that have moving, flashing lights or images. So how they got there, your guess is as good as mine, but I guess, my guess is something I won't mention at a public meeting, but there have been discussions on this, and Supervisor Albre is also aware of this. The town board, in fact, is going to be considering and has actually already asked the town board's attorney to make some recommendations regarding the sign regulations and in particular, the billboard regulations. I think I might have some suggestions myself, but some of it has to do with.
Are we still on?
Yes.
Yeah, oh yeah. This is, this is a public discussion.
Okay. We're still on TV?
Yes. Hopefully, yeah.
Yeah.
Just a question, why can't they be taken down if they're not conforming?
Well, that's a question to pose to the building department, which I have done. But I haven't really gotten a response.
What is stopping the building department from taking them down?
I can't comment on that. I would check with them if I were you.
Where are those? Route 9?
So they're on, they're on the east side of Route 9, basically just across from or south of the old Duchess Mall property, dilapidated Duchess Mall. It's still dilapidated and hasn't been demolished yet.
Yep.
So that's one.
And the billboards came without the building inspector aware of them?
I'm not going to comment at all on it because I'm not the building department. If you have interest in it, I would check with the building department. The second thing that also actually involves the building department is a clearing permit issued by the building department on that site on Route 9D that I'm sure a lot of you have driven past all the time on Robert Payson Way.
Yes.
Yeah. So it's the form, it's the site of the formal approval for the Burches Assisted Living Facility that funding didn't come through for that. The former applicant had cut trees on the site after they got the initial approvals from the town, from the planning board. The building department is working with the owner to clean up the site, in quotes, but cleaning, clearing and grading appears to be way more than what reasonably should have been done, in my opinion. It looks like a full construction site with massive earth movement and grading. Already talked to several of the planning board members about it, and I've also talked to the building department about it. It also looks like work is temporarily stopped, leaving the site in the visually and environmentally exposed condition. So I did speak with Joel Petrus about it, and I'm waiting to hear back from Joel after he was going to check the site, but it really looks like nothing, no movement is happening on that site right now.
No temporary vegetation of any kind.
And even barely any proper sediment and erosion control.
Non-existent.
So I just thought I would make everybody aware of those. Supervisor Albre is also aware of that situation.
Another brick in the wall.
Hey, that's a good.
Good song.
Good analogy.
Well, I hope the town board's paying attention, that's all I'll say.
So that's all I had. Anyone else has anything interesting to report to the board or discuss or anything?
No, but to those who are, happy Father's Day this, this coming year.
All right. Well, if there is nothing else that board members or staff would like to bring up, the next meeting of the planning board is scheduled for Thursday, July 11th, and the deadline for that meeting is Wednesday, June 26th. So it will be interesting to see what we get in for that one.
For that meeting, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to be away, and my colleague Sarah Wilson is available to cover the meeting for the board.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Of course. Thank you.
We actually really appreciate the work that Sarah has done.
Yes.
The limited times that she's been available for us.
She's looking forward to appearing before you again.
I'm not trying to keep everybody here, but there was another email circulated about the Fishkill landing.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
So is there any?
That was interesting. That was very interesting.
Yeah.
We don't have an actual application on that one yet, though.
And it looks like there may not be one for quite a while.
I don't believe so.
Yeah, is that, do you want to mention what that was about, Robbie? Just in case. I think we all got copies of that.
I did send it out to everyone.
Yeah, we all, I mean, there was some, there was a proposed overbridge, bridge over the Metro North Railroad from the watchtower area, so, but the watchtower people are opposing that.
They're pretty much not going to do it.
Yes. So they suggested some alternative location.
And I thought there was an implication that there was another, there was another crossing that had been considered before or something.
Yeah, that actually mentioned what I thought would probably have been the more logical place to put it off of Brockway, at the, the western end of Brockway Road, where there was a former and now dilapidated, looked like a pedestrian bridge or something going across the railroad tracks. But there's apparently a, you know, already an existing public road right-of-way right there, so.
Some compelling points remain in that, in that letter.
Yeah. Yeah, very interesting. Well, I know we're just sitting here because we're all in shock that we finished, finishing by 9:30, but we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Robbie moves it, and Felix seconds it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? None. They're done.
Yes.
Thank you. The word's clear. I approve.